Okay, we are returning to the land of the living now and moving forward. And in our clerk's office now we have and we welcome Cheyenne. So, welcome. Thank you. All right, we're on to agenda, item number nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card and wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council will not respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time on this public comment period at one minute. So, and if in fact you have an unusual last name or first, if you would spell it, so we are getting it for our records.
Well, I do have an unusual first name, yes. My mother gave me this name, Joellen, and it's J-O-E-L-L-Y-N, and no one can ever pronounce it correctly when they seen. But my name is Joellen Cotton, and I have some thoughts on the homeless. I saw the newscast last week on Channel 13 when I heard the city council was voting and I was listening to about the bill making, that about it being illegal for the homeless to camp on city sidewalks and other properties. So, I'd like to speak a little bit on that. And I have copies of my statement. And I know you're probably not discussing it, I understand it's going to be on November 6.
Correct. And so, we would ask you, just it would be a minute, but if she needs, since it's already printed, to go ahead and read your statement, but you're correct, November 6.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Hello to all of you. I have passed two properties in particular on the bus for several years while attending UNLV. I graduated in 2015 with my BA in art, and I guess it has, it was that activity that made creative thoughts and trying to figure out something to do with the homeless. I've been mulling it over in my mind, and this is how the concept would work or could work. With no money to implement my concept, I feel this, it is time for some action on my part to express my feelings. I have a proposal for housing for the homeless. It involves two properties on Sahara, one near Boulder Highway, the other one on Sandhill and Sahara. Sandhill and Sahara property would be an open-air housing, and I understand it's already either being leased or sold, but the property had been a lumberyard in the past. And looking at this property reminds me of Les Mis play that I saw in London. I can imagine two layers of rooms extending about 50 feet, using the two levels that held up the lumber in the past. And on either ends of the rows of rooms would be open heating from the use of barrels holding fire. Of course, it would have to have covered grates to prevent the embers from escaping. Mobile porta-potties and showers would be brought in, plus washing machines in the building that is also on the property. And the building could also house services needed for the homeless. They would need to be checked in and be accountable for seeking the services. Then the property on Boulder Highway in Sahara has also considered, has considerable enclosed square footage. And that property could contain medical services that could be provided for the homeless. It could be divided into apartments and some other type of living arrangements, office space for services where needed services could be available readily for the, those that need them. Both areas would have opportunities for employment. That's a whole nother quest, of course. Thank you for allowing me to speak my mind and hearing listening to me. Now, I feel like Forrest Gump, and that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down and for your comments, and I've passed the copy on both to Mr. Savante, head of community development, and Dr. Morris Hibbler, who is in charge of neighborhood services. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman and council members. My name is Jesse Newman. I'm the business manager, financial secretary for IBW 396. I'm here speaking collectively on behalf of the IBWs, IBW 396 and 357. Thank you for allowing me to comment briefly on item 12. The city has undertaken major economic development efforts over the last few years, and nothing is more important than that we have a safe and reliable electrical supply. Local 396 members employed by Invenergy have provided that service for decades. I hope you will support the agreement with Invenergy and the hard-working Nevadans and many who live in your city, and that I am here representing today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. We appreciate your comments.
Good morning, Madam Mayor.
Hi.
Members of council. For the record, my name is William Horn, Vice President of Strategies 360, here on behalf of my client, Safe Nest. On agenda item 50, I was curious, Madam Mayor, if you were going to allow for a comment during that item's presentation? If so, I can hold my comments until that time. I'd like to do that, and my client is also here.
Yes, we will be allowing comments.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, and good morning, City Council members. For the record, my name is Sunny Vinuia. I am the president of the Las Vegas Asian Chamber of Commerce. I will make a brief statement, item 12, on behalf of the chamber. The city of Las Vegas has largely focused its efforts on economic development, a goal the Asian Chamber shares with you. Invenergy is integral to our success, as without reliable electricity, there can be no growth. They have been a wonderful community partner to the Asian Chamber and to our entire community. I urge your support of the energy agreement you have before you today, and thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and make comments? Okay, I will close agenda item nine. We'll move on to agenda item 10. Business items, any items from the 9:00 AM session, council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abance to a future meeting may be brought forward and act upon this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The following items have been requested to be held in abance, withdrawn, or stricken. Item number 25, approval of a new compliance permit for a retail marijuana store for Essence, Tropicana LLC, DBA Essence at 2307 South Las Vegas Boulevard. The action was in abance until November 6, 2019, requested by the applicant. Agenda item 26, approval of a retail marijuana store license for Nevada Organic Remedies LLC, DBA The Source at 1725 South Rainbow Boulevard, Suite Number 21, was stricken, requested by staff. Item number 38, for possible action to approve staff to initiate a condemnation, an action for the purchase of property rights for the Charleston Boulevard Streetscape Improvements projects. The abance until November 6, 2019, requested by Councilman Knutson. And Madam Mayor, that will be my motion.
Thank you very much. There is a motion. Please vote and please post.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Louanne, my, I just, I've got logged out of here for some reason.
Would you like to vote affirmative?
I would like to vote in the affirmative.
It did clear, something cleared there. So, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on to agenda item 11. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the September 4, 2019 city council meeting, Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the September 4, 2019 city council meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Let's go on to agenda items 22 through 40, excuse me, 12 through 44, with the exception of items 25, 26, and 38. Consent agenda considered to be routine recommended for approval by departments and may be enacted in one motion. Note that the record should reflect my abstention, item number 27 through 30, because they pertain to the medical marijuana industry and one of my sons involved in that industry. I'll be voting on all other items. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward? None. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion on?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items number 12 through 44, with the exception of the items 25, 26, and 38. Items to be pulled off consent for discussion should be heard after the consent vote.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post.
Aye.
And Councilman Krier votes orally with an aye. And the motion passes. Thank you very much. Move on to agenda item 44.
45.
45. Why do I have a question mark on 44? Okay. Agenda item 45, administrative discussion for possible action regarding a purchase-sales agreement between City Parkway 5, INC., CPV, and Vegas Epicenter LLC to purchase one parcel located in 523 South Main Street, $1,400,000 City Parkway Fund. And this is in Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz. And so, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of City Council, Bill Arntz, Director of Economic and Urban Development. This item before you is an item to acquire land adjacent to the City Hall campus located at 523 South Main Street. I do have a map on the overhead, and it's also part of your backup. The city is proposing through an affiliate entity, City Parkway 5, Inc., to purchase one parcel, approximately .17 acres, located again across the street near Main and Clark. The purchase price negotiated with the seller is $1,400,000. This transaction is a willing seller, willing buyer transaction. Closing of the purchase and sale shall occur on or before January 20 of next year. The purpose of this is to assemble and acquire the entire block or as much of the entire block across the street as we can to do a new mixed-use project consistent with the 2045 master plan. One of the goals of this acquisition is to also introduce more open space and green space in our downtown, which is part of the master plan. And the master plan specifies that the city, and particularly its downtown, is very underserved with the amount of green space and open space. So, this is the objective of acquiring this parcel. Staff recommends approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Could you describe what we're looking at here? And I see what looks like a building there, and then there's a red mark around one of the rectangles. What do we have? What's the building underneath?
Certainly, Mayor, and the red may not show on the overhead real well. I apologize. But the parcel that we're in question is this parcel mid-block. So, this street is Main. This is Bonneville, and then to the north is Clark. And so, you would see here just to the north of Clark would be City Hall. This building is the DEA building at the corner of Main and Bonneville. And then there, you see there adjacent, the City Hall parking garage, 500 Main Street. So, this is a key acquisition in the heart of our downtown. The original vision for City Hall is that we'd have buildings around us to have a civic plaza, much like you see in many downtowns throughout the country. And so, acquiring this parcel will allow us to acquire most of the land in this block. There still is one privately-owned piece right here, and so, we're looking to acquire as much as we can to develop it for new use. And we always try to engage sellers to try to come up with a fair purchase price. And so, again, this was a willing seller, willing buyer transaction, meaning that the seller is happy selling and is comfortable with the purchase price negotiated.
Mr. Arntz, then, except for the building that's there, you just pointed out, do we own everything else then at this time on that block?
So, we've acquired the rest of the land here. We do not own this piece, and then this piece here is privately-owned.
So, but the rest of it now, if this should pass council?
We either own it or have purchase rights on it. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from anyone on council? Okay, could I have a motion? Mayor Pro Tem? No. Could I have a motion? Councilwoman Diaz, please. It's her area.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve item number 45.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve agenda item 45. Please vote and please post. And the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item 46. Report from Dr. Lisa Morris Hibbler, Chief Community Services Officer regarding the Mayor's Fund for Las Vegas Life. A discussion for possible action to approve funding not to exceed $175,000 annually to offset administrative costs, general fund, all wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the council, Lisa Morris Hibbler, Chief Community Services Officer. It is my pleasure to bring to you this update on the Mayor's Fund for Las Vegas Life. In September of 2018, the Mayor's Fund for Las Vegas Life was launched and designed to identify key priorities that would benefit from private investment in the areas of livability, innovation, future, and education. Since city officials and employees cannot solicit, the Mayor's Fund pursues restricted, unrestricted, and in-kind resources from local, state, and national private and philanthropic sector donors. The Mayor's Fund solely supports innovative city of Las Vegas programs that improve the quality of life for all Las Vegas residents. The fund is nonpartisan and is designed to operate in a consistent manner even as mayoral and city council administrations change over time. In essence, we have designed it to be, live on in perpetuity. The Mayor's Fund Advisory Committee is an impressive list of business leaders, communities leaders, and philanthropists. The advisory committee serves as the fund's governing body and provides vital guidance to facilitate the fund's multi-sector efforts and build support for public-private partnerships that will promote systemic change and have a lasting positive impact on the lives of Las Vegas residents. And we do have some of those members in the audience today. With the goal of raising $1 million per year, I'm pleased to say that in our inaugural year, we've raised $3,561,968. And that breaks down to cash donations received in the amount of $879,000, $2.6 million in in-kind donations received, and we have $30,000 in pledges. I can say that for year two, our pledges are already coming in. The current programs that have received funding include tech innovation, which was a $2.68 million donation and for goods and services that was brought to us by Director Michael Sherwood; the Las Vegas Courtyard, who's received nearly $300,000; Strong Start Gold Mobile Pre-K that has received $150,000; the Community Healing Fund that supports the Community Healing Garden and Resilience in our community has received $92,000; Reinvent Schools has received $85,000; Summer Learning Academies and Safe Key, $75,000; the Las Vegas Book Festival, $36,000; the Las Vegas Connected, which bridges the digital divide, $30,000; Veterans Initiative, $20,000; Corporate Challenge, $14,000; Youth Sports, $12,000; and Public Art, $10,000. This is just a quick snapshot. It certainly doesn't cover all of the wins that we've had in the Mayor's Fund, but because of these donations, 171 youth received a scholarship to participate in basketball, flag football, and soccer. The Courtyard Homeless Resource Center served 6,921 unique guests, of which 4,200 received supportive services to move towards self-sufficiency. And 5,100 guests stayed overnight between the timeframe of August of 2018 to August of 2019. There was a mid-year school supply drive that provided school supplies to 19 community locations throughout the city and impacted over 7,000 students. And then, the Mayor's Fund provided support for the Community Healing Garden and the release of the Las Vegas Healing Book. So, how are programs selected? Applications are submitted to the Mayor's Fund from city departments detailing their plans, their budgets, and their expected outcomes. Those applications are then reviewed and vetted by the city management to ensure that they meet three criteria. That they align with city council priorities, that they leverage community resources, and that they can produce measurable results. We take great care to manage the fund and the programs and make sure that they are responsible and that it's transparent. Fiscal management is provided by the Nevada Community Foundation, who serves as the fiscal agent. They receive all of the private donations and provide donors with charitable contribution tax documentation. And then, implementation, monitoring, and reporting is done by the City of Las Vegas Mayor's Fund Coordinator, who manages the internal operations to ensure departments are reporting quarterly on the programmatic successes, any challenges, their progress towards the goals, and monitoring expenses. They also coordinate with the implementation partners. Our implementation partners have been Nevada Community Foundation, again, who is the fiscal agent; Moonridge Group, who has helped inspire community partners to invest in the Mayor's Fund; the Give Better Group, who helped us internally build the infrastructure needed for the Mayor's Fund; and Festfoly Warren, who is our public relations. This just talks a little bit about our media and mentions. The Mayor's Fund has been, there's been articles in the Nevada Independent, the Inside Philanthropy, Nevada Current, Review Journal, KNPR, just to name a few. This morning, there was a press release issued by Life is Beautiful. As they have partnered with Amazon for the Intersect Music Festival at the Sahara Festival Grounds, and 5,000 tickets will be set aside at a discounted rate of $100 each, with all of the profits going towards the Mayor's Fund, which could see a donation of up to $500,000. There has been an organic embrace of the Mayor's Fund within the community. So, coming soon, we have a mobile app, an impact report that is produced annually, and a quarterly newsletter. We will also be making periodic reports to the city council on the Mayor's Fund and the Mayor's Fund activities. So, currently, the Mayor's Fund operation ratio is 85 to 15. 85% of every dollar that's donated directly supports the city of Las Vegas priorities and programs, and we are seeking $175,000 annually to offset the administrative and operational costs. Those costs, to date, have been $211,000 from fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 20, so collectively as a total. And they've covered our costs associated with our implementation partners, the collateral materials, the donor events, the design of the website and database, and that funding will be used in the future to cover similar administrative costs moving forward. I do appreciate all of the feedback that we've received from the council about really trying to ensure that 100% of the donor dollars go directly to the priorities and programs, and we will be working towards that over the next year. So, this was an extremely collaborative process. I just want to quickly acknowledge and thank, first and foremost, the donors. I want to thank the external partners for the Mayor's Fund, the advisory committee, the Nevada Community Foundation, Moonridge Group, Give Better Group, and Festfoly Warren, as well as our internal partners, you, the city council, our city manager's office, city attorneys, finance department, communications, the department directors and their staff, Lee Quick, the Mayor's Fund Coordinator. And I have just a quick video that's going to just give us a little, captures the moments over the past year.
One of the areas that we're going to focus on is the Courtyard Campus for Ending Homelessness.
By the way, people are treated when they come to the courtyard. They're treated as people, you know? They're not clients, they're not just the homeless person, you know? They're our guests.
At the end of the workday, instead of trying to find a place to lay their head huddled on the streets, these two friends head to their own apartments, where they are warm in the winter, cool in the summer, and safe year-round. They just want others to know it can be done.
Come here. Just come here and talk to somebody.
All it takes is the will. If I can do it from no support and get up off the street, anybody can do it.
In the area of innovation, we're going to be looking at our connect home program for equitable internet access.
Internet connection is critical these days because you really need it to connect to your kid's school. Banking, you can grocery shop. Job search, the days of walking into an employer and handing in a paper application are over. And so, you really need that connection to the internet if you're going to be successful.
Because it helped me with schooling a lot, especially since we do a lot of things on computers and tablets. It also helped me with projects that I needed to get done.
Having Shania work for us was an absolute joy. She was one of our best and most hard-working workers. She was always on time to stand, never hesitated to take charge and be a leader among her peers.
So, it's just been really awesome being able to be here and just learn all these new great skills, time management especially, and just being able to bond and learn these great skills inside the workforce. I'm CPR certified. That certification means a lot with going on my resume and just going in the future, knowing that I did have this experience. And being able to say that I was a lifeguard and that I particularly saved lives is a really big thing for me. It's something minor, but to another job, it's something really big.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hibbler. Any comments, questions? Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem? Yes? No, you're good? Thank you. That was beautiful. Yes?
Thank you very much. I just want to say thanks for all the hard work that you guys have done and put into it. I think it was a great concept to put together. You know, as you know, the mayors and cities have a huge impact on philanthropy that is committed to projects in a city. I mean, just recently, I think I sent you an article that the mayor of Atlanta raised like $50 million to go towards homelessness in their city. And so, it can be done, and it takes the support of the community and those that are willing to not just talk about it, but to do about it and to be about it. So, keep pushing. Anything we can do to help you, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll have a motion. Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My motion is to approve item, agenda 46.
There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, agenda item 47, discussion for possible action regarding activating and operating a temporary program by which fines for qualifying parking infractions may be paid by means of the donation of food items in lieu of payment of money pursuant to LVMC, $11.10.150, all wards.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, for the record, Bill Arntz, Director of Economic and Urban Development. I'm really privileged and delighted to introduce this item because I think this program really, more than anything, brings awareness to a lot of the great community groups and philanthropic groups in our community. This program was adopted by city council on July 18 of 2016, and this agenda item is essentially turn the lights on and activate this program to allow those that are experiencing a parking citation in lieu of paying the fine to submit food donations for a worthy charity. This year's recommended charity is Helping Hands of Vegas Valley. It's a 5-on-1 seat nonprofit organization whose mission is to improve the quality of life for senior citizens and their families in order to maintain their dignity and independence. This group provides more than 9,000 rides annually to transport seniors to important medical appointments. It delivers food from a food pantry program and feeds more than 500 low-income seniors each month. Its respite care program gives a break to those that are providing home care, and over 600 resident caregivers with a respite get a break from their responsibilities, and also provides minor home repairs. also provides minor home repairs. This program would be for any qualifying citation issued between October 16 and November 16 of this year. It would exclude public safety and handicap violations. And enforcement officers will include information about the program with every qualifying citation. And the donation must be received by December 16 and must be accompanied by a receipt. In the summer of this year, there were 58 citations that were part of the program. In addition, many unsolicited staff donations for a grand total of over $5,000. So it certainly has a meaningful financial impact, but I think more than anything brings a lot of awareness to a much-needed program in our community. With that, staff recommends approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? No, I think we're fine. Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve item number 47.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 47. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 48. Thank you, Mr. Arndt. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Removal Of A Partial Roadway Closure At The Intersection Of Alta Drive And Shetland Road, $2,000 Traffic Improvements Capital Fund Project, CPF, Ward 1 and Councilman Knutson's Ward 1. And good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of city council. We're here today to discuss the intersection of Shetland Road at Alta Drive. And I'd like to start off giving you just a overview of where this location is. It is the first intersection west of the intersection of Rancho and Alta. It's a north-south street. It runs between Alta and Palomino Lane. And it has an offset where it continues down to Charleston as well. And it services the community, but it also services Wazin Elementary School. At the current time, Wazin Elementary School is under reconstruction, but when Wazin is in operation, this street sees somewhere between about 800 and 1,000 vehicles a day. And to give you some background on this item, in March of 2018, Mayor Protem Tarkanian, former Mayor Protem Tarkanian, received a request to fully close Shetland at Alta with a gate. Some discussion was held related to that request. Some traffic studies were done to collect traffic data surrounding the location, some crash data, some crime data, a variety of information was collected. And that led to the August 23, 2018 Traffic and Parking Commission, where the item was heard. And the Traffic and Parking Commission denied the request to close the street. We did a neighborhood survey in advance of that Traffic and Parking Commission meeting to find out what the neighborhood felt, and the neighborhood felt that 71% was in opposition to the street closure, 29% were in favor. Some time passed where folks who were in support of seeing the street closed requested that the item be appealed to city council. And that followed with a February 6, 2019, agenda item to hear that appeal. Mayor Protem Tarkanian, at the time, decided to obey that council item after hearing from a lot of the residents with concerns and decided to have a neighborhood meeting. A neighborhood meeting was held on February 28. And at that meeting, the item was discussed, and we also introduced a compromise alternative known as a partial closure, something that we have very close to this location, one I know, Mayor Goodman, that you're familiar with, about a mile south at Waldman and Rancho. And what was clear at the meeting that we had was, there was not an option, leave it as is, install a gate, or install the partial closure that could satisfy the differing opinions of the neighborhood. April 17, we brought an item to council to consider the intersection again. And what was approved by council at the April 17 meeting was a partial closure as the compromise alternative. It's basically a median island with regulatory signage that permits a northbound right turn only. At that meeting, Councilman Anthony, you made some comments from hearing from the citizens that came. We had many citizens that attended at that meeting, and you indicated, you know, with what we're hearing, let's use something that's temporary in case we come back here and have to remove it. So we installed a median with what's known as a tack-on median island. That median was installed on August 12. We wanted to get that island in before the start of the school year, when the traffic everywhere, regardless of Shetland being open to Wazin or not, that's the busiest time of the year. We wanted to get it open. So we had it in place August 12. And folks had a chance to use that temporary median restrictor island, and they provided a lot of feedback on how that island was being received. So Councilman Knutson organized another neighborhood meeting on September 17. Very well-attended meeting. We had a lot of spirited dialogue on the merits of what was done with the partial closure. What we heard at that meeting, mayor and council, was overwhelmingly, the residents want the intersection restored to its original condition with no restrictions. September 30, we sent out an additional survey to all the original residents to make sure that we were capturing the voice of everyone who may not have made that meeting. And that survey showed that 89% of the residents were in support of removing the partial closure. 11% were in support of leaving it in place. Based on this information and all of the meetings, discussions that we've had with the residents, many of whom I know are in the audience here today, our staff recommendation to you is to remove the partial roadway closure and allow the Shetland-Alta intersection to be restored to its original condition that allowed all movements to occur. And I want to add that throughout this process, while it was a very challenging item for the community, a lot of good things have come out of it, such as, in the meetings that we've had with the residents, we've identified other streets where some of the residents brought to our attention, places they'd like to see some speed cushions and speed humps. We've identified locations where some signs, some lights, a whole host of things that came out of those meetings that were really good feedback from the neighborhood. And I want to add, one of the things was approval to add speed humps on this portion of Shetland, because our traffic study did show that there was traffic doing more than 10 over the speed limit, and it met our criteria for those speed cushions. So out of all this, there are some good things that have occurred with the community, but from what we've heard, that's our staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. I see former Councilman McDonald here. Welcome. And knowing that you are a big advocate for the change, and I think both Mayor Protem Tarkanian and myself, on the vote, were absent. There were four council persons remaining at that meeting when that vote did occur to make the change to the partial gating. So let's start with you, former councilman, and then we'll turn it over. And any questions, we'll let you handle this, please, Mr. Knutson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the time. For the record, Michael McDonald, 2520 Pinto Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank staff that came up with the alternative. We met, I think, the Friday before, was going to city council. As you know, I travel a lot. I didn't know anything about this. So when I went before council, the people that had hired me to make the presentation in the neighborhood came back and they decided they want it. We'd like to thank them for their effort on everything they've done. The survey that was sent out, if I can go with the overhead, am I in the right place, Your Honor?
Please.
Was a great survey that was sent out. Many of the people that have identified this, it gave a good meaning after the councilman had jumped into action, to show that, not many, I don't know anybody really that's in support of it. My neighbors behind me, Chuck and Mindy, they don't want it. R.T. Smith, who cannot be here today, he didn't want it. I don't like it. It's a very inconvenience. And I'll go back to the first city council meeting, when you said, when this was first heard, and Councilman Soroka and I engaged in spirited dialogue, that you pointed out that chokers don't work. And overwhelmingly, the neighbors that wanted this, that hired me to do this, wanted a gate. When it came down, that they came back with an alternative, that they wanted the chokers. Am I saying it right, chokers?
Close enough.
An engineering term, that this was going to be a problem. They went with it, but you got to thank them for that. I want to thank the effort. But overwhelmingly, I would concur that I don't know many people in the neighborhood that like it. It's, if you live on Shetland or Pinto, you can't get to there, and you always forget where you're going. But I'd also like to thank Councilman Anthony for putting, making it partial, not permanent, which was helping, I think, helped us sell a lot of it. But more importantly, I want to thank Councilman Knutson for what you've done. And that was great to have that neighborhood meeting. You've been, I know you've been interacting with a lot of the neighbors that have had on Pinto, that had questions about this. And after that, they said, we don't want to fight anymore, Mike. So we're drawing our support. So overwhelmingly, I'd say I think that it's more than that, because the people that wanted it, clearly, they wanted a gate. Gate wasn't on the radar. So I think it divided the neighborhood in a bad way. And I think that the councilman brought it back together at the neighborhood meeting, which is, thank you, Councilman, for what you've done. So that was just from the people that wanted it, that I represented. I think overwhelmingly, they don't want it anymore. I don't want it. I've been released, and I can talk as an individual, not as a representative of the people that wanted it. As an individual that lives there, I don't want it. I wish it would be removed. We talked after the meeting the other night, or last month, and it was very, like I said, thank you for helping us out and putting it together.
Well, thank you very much. And for everyone who was advocating one side or another, really appreciate the participation. That is the way government should work. And you go ahead, you don't just dictate something. You go ahead and you explore it, you hear from the people, you go ahead and get the experts in. And the only sad thing is it costs money. But in the end, you end up with a result that is the wise thing. And fortunately, knowing that Councilwoman Mayor Protem Tarkanian felt very strongly about this, but also was advocating for the balance, and I'm so thrilled that Councilman Knutson, coming on board, picked it up and even took it further. So we're at a resolution point. I don't know if there are any comments from anybody in council, but I would turn it over to you, thanking you very much for the wisdom to have the meeting. And thank you, Mr. Janson. You always just are so helpful, so responsive, so nonjudgmental, and coming up with new ideas and concepts to satisfy whatever the problem is. So for you and your team in your department, thank you very, very much. And thank you again to Mr. McDonald for doing what you've done through this. So, Councilman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Janson and Mr. McDonald. I appreciate the dialogue. And for the residents that are here, thank you for engaging, because that's the most important part. That's how we keep our communities thriving, especially in Ward 1 and some of these older neighborhoods. It's the engagement that keeps them doing so well. Mr. Janson, what's the timeframe on removal?
We have two options, Councilman. We have our contractor that installed it, and we'd get into their queue, and it's probably going to be somewhere around two to three weeks. Another option is, I'm going to talk with Jerry Walker afterwards, our Director of Operations and Maintenance. Jerry has some staff that has the equipment that could lift that temporary island out, and I'm hopeful that that could be the quickest option. So I'll follow up with Jerry after the meeting.
So I will be making a motion to have it removed. I think that if it's not out by the end of the week, the neighbors will probably do it themselves. So...
Excuse me, Councilman. Could I ask you, I was just, we heard that we have representatives from the neighborhood. I would have no problem if they wished to talk and make comment. That's up to you, though.
I am going to make a motion to have it removed. If any of the neighbors want to come up and speak to that, that's fine. Okay. That's my motion.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on Agenda Item 48 to have the temporary structure removed. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. Thank you again.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Ms. Seaman, Councilwoman Seaman.
And Mr. Dorcek. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 49, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible For Adoption At This Meeting. Bill Number 2019-30. Councilman Anthony, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-30, In Ordnance To amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual To Allow The Use Auto Sales Showroom In Specified Land Use Districts Either As A Conditional Use Or By Means Of Special Use Permit To Allow The Use Valet Parking In Specified Land Use Districts As A Conditional Use And To Provide For Other Related Matters.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 49. And please post. The motion carries. Thank you. Now, on Agenda Item 50, Councilman Anthony Will Horn asked if he could speak to this at the time, and I'm going to invite him to do so. We'll have the bill read first.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, please, if you would, on Agenda Item 50, Bill Number 219-35. And Councilman asked to go ahead and have the bill read.
Bill Number 2019-35, In Ordnance Adding To LVMC Title 10, A New Chapter To Establish A City Misdemeanor Offense Of Battery Which Constitutes Domestic Violence Along With Corresponding Penalties And To Provide For Other Related Matters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to update everyone, this was heard at the recommending committee meeting with myself as the chair and Councilman Knutson and Mayor Protem Fiori. We discussed the bill, we heard public comment. The three of us made some comments in support, not support, have questions. We decided to vote to not make a recommendation to the entire city council and let the entire city council hear it today. And that's where we're at.
Thank you, Councilman. I think what we want to do first, Mr. Horn, absolutely, I said you would be given your time. I think best to get all the information out that we can provide, and then, so we'll start with you, Mr. Gerber.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of council, Brad Gerber, I'm here with the city attorney's office. We're here today because there was an order of the Nevada Supreme Court that came down September 12 of this year that has mandated jury trials and battery domestic violence cases. I need to give you a little background here, because where we're going to go at the end of this is a lot of options, but to understand how we got there, I think is kind of important. So let's start with how did we get there. Battery domestic violence cases are misdemeanors in the state of Nevada and in most states, and as such are called petty offenses. Petty offenses don't take away a substantial liberty interest, and therefore jury trials are not required in cases where they are petty offenses. And battery domestic violence cases have consistently been found to be petty offenses, even though from time to time, the legislature may put another penalty on top of it. For example, mandatory counseling, or mandatory community service, or mandatory this, that, or the other thing. Those have never triggered the Supreme Court looking at battery domestic violence as anything other than a petty offense. In 2014, the Supreme Court looked at battery domestic violence, because there had been some changes made by the legislature and changes made by the federal government years earlier that said you can't possess or have a firearm if you're convicted of battery domestic violence. And what they said was, the enhanced penalties up to 120 days of community service and/or six months in jail did not change it from a petty offense. And they said very specifically, it's the federal government, not state action, but federal action, that took away the firearms, and because it wasn't the state, it doesn't implicate the state constitution, and we're not going to visit the federal constitution, and it's still a petty offense. They said that in 2014. What happened in 2015, the state legislature decided to legislate in this area where they had not done it before. They said at a state level, not just a federal level, you can't own, possess a firearm, and that triggered the lawsuit in 2015.
Excuse me, at what time, you said 2015?
Correct.
They said after how many offenses you could not own a firearm?
Any.
None.
Any, yeah. You're convicted of battery domestic violence, out, done with firearms. So when the state did that, everybody, the Supreme Court woke up, as could well be predicted, and it was contrary to what they had said in their 2014 opinion. Now, it wasn't just a federal offense, it was a state offense. And they say very specifically, in the Anderson opinion that came out in September, this gives us cause to revisit our conclusion that it's a petty offense. And they said, now that you've stepped on the rights of people to bear arms, both under the U.S. Constitution and the Nevada Constitution, it is no longer a petty offense. And if it's no longer a petty offense, it's a serious offense, and that requires a jury trial. So that's how we got to where we got it. And I'm not criticizing the Supreme Court or their opinion. But here's what we have to do. And this is why we're here today. First of all, I'm going to say this at the beginning, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, because there's no perfect here. There isn't, that I can think of.
Could you repeat them, please?
I said, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. There is no perfect here. In a perfect world, perfect would be, we could comply with this right this minute. We could do jury trials, and they wouldn't be long delays in doing those jury trials, and it would just be a different way of bringing somebody to justice other than a trial before a court. The reason we can't do that is numerous. One, we don't have jury boxes in our courtrooms. Two, we don't have enough prosecutors and enough judges and enough defense attorneys to keep these cases moving at the pace that we move them now. We moved over 5,000 cases last year. Think about this. This is a large, large number of cases. The DA's office in July, 500 submissions for battery domestic violence. The DA's office in July, 500 submissions for battery domestic violence. Now, they're in a little different position. In justice court, they do have jury boxes, and in justice court, they are going to try domestic violence cases starting in mid-November. And we will know in a month or two exactly what that looks like. Right now, we can try about five, maybe a little more, domestic violence cases before a municipal judge as a petty offense, which it isn't anymore, but until September, petty offense, we could try about five a day in front of an individual judge, times six judges. Here's what I believe is going to happen. Without more courtrooms, without more judges and prosecutors and the like, we're going to try maybe one, not five a day. So, think about this. You try a case now, you go into court, the court calls the docket, says, are you ready to proceed, City of Las Vegas? And we say, yes. Call your first witness. You do. It's pretty quick. And then the judge makes a ruling. That's how it works now, and you can see how quickly that moves. Under a jury trial, you have to get a jury panel in the courtroom. You have to go through jury selection. After you go through jury selection, they have to be informed as to what the law is by the judge. The judge gives instructions at the beginning, and then there's an opening statement, and then you call your witnesses. And then at the end, you settle jury instructions. And then the judge gives instructions to the jury, and then they deliberate. And that deliberation can be as long as a jury wants to take. You're going to be trying about one a day, in my opinion. Now, we'll know a lot better when the DA starts doing this in November, but that will, think about this and what it does to the caseload.
Excuse me, you said, how many cases are on our doorstep at this point? Did you say 5,000?
About 5,000 a year, yeah. That's what we get.
And you're going to do one a day, under what you've just, the scenario?
Under a jury trial, you would.
One a day, and we have 5,000.
Per court. So, unless you increase the number of judges and prosecutors and defense attorneys, you're going to see a backup occur at an exponential rate. What's going to happen is, let's just say, and I'm just making up numbers here, let's say you have five in courtroom number one, but now you can only do one case instead of five cases. Four move to Tuesday. Doesn't really work that way, but you can see what I'm saying. It moves. So, now you have nine instead of five, but you can only do one. So, eight move to Wednesday. So, and now you have 13 instead of five. And you can only do one, so 12 move to the next day. You can see exponentially, the time between a charge of a defendant and arrest and an actual trial and adjudication is going to go stretching out a year, two, or three years very, very quickly. So, that puts you in an interesting position, because under Nevada law, domestic violence cases are non-negotiable if you can prove them. So, once we accept a case for prosecution, unless it falls apart between our accepting the case and the trial, we can't just willy-nilly dismiss these or reduce them. So, you've got to try them. So, you put all those things together, and you get that outcome. So, that's why I'm saying there is no good outcome here. So, that's outcome number one. Even if we could do it, we're going to need immediately more money for more judges, more prosecutors, and then you might be able to keep up the pace that you have right now.
Question from Councilman Anthony, please.
I don't know if you're going to get to this, Brad, but I was talking to one of your deputy attorneys, and it's my understanding that our charter doesn't even allow for jury trials for misdemeanors. So, for us to even do jury trials, if we wanted to, we'd have to change the charter, which is done by the state legislature, which doesn't even meet for another year and a half. Is that correct?
It's correct, and let me address that right now, because I'm done with the first argument. Jury trials have their own problem, unless there's a lot more money to fund what I just suggested, or you're going to have a backlog. And before I address your question real quick, the reason a backlog is very, very important to consider, the risk to a victim increases dramatically after an arrest. Between the time of arrest and the time of trial, that's when the victim is most at risk. We all know that. And so, what happens? We used to mail subpoenas out to victims to come to court. Guess what happens? The perpetrator who lives with her pulls it out of the mailbox and tears it up, and she never gets it. She never shows up. So, now we have to hand-deliver. We have investigators that every day hand-deliver subpoenas. And they give them information about how to protect themselves during this period between arrest and trial. And we have advocates. Suzette is sitting in the audience, she's my new assistant, but Suzette was a domestic violence advocate in our office for many, many years. We actually advise people to put together safety plans, to put away money and car keys and stuff, in case you have to get out of that house quickly. This is a very, very serious issue. So, continuing these cases, extending the time between arrest and trial, has consequences. So, that's the picture if we're doing jury trials. Going to your question, our charter and many other charters around the state prohibit our municipal court from jury trials. It's actually forbidden in the charter. I think I know where this will go, and this is my prediction. The Supreme Court has said, it's a violation of the United States Constitution and the Nevada Constitution to not have a jury trial for what is now a serious offense because of the change to the law in 2015, taking away your gun. If it's a constitutional violation to not have a jury trial, if we argue to the Nevada Supreme Court that we can't do them if we wanted to, our charter says we can't. Guess which wins? Constitution versus charter? We know what's going to happen. So, I think it's a pretty easy hurdle for the court to get over, and I would almost hesitate to make that argument, because it almost sounds like we're trying to get around the Anderson decision. So, having said that, it's an argument, and it's out there, but this is how complicated it is. So, let's go, jury trials, number one, and the consequences of doing them. Consequence of what we're doing right now. Today, because we can't do jury trials, we're charging people with simple battery, not battery domestic violence. Simple battery does not have that requirement that you lose your gun. And it doesn't have a federal requirement either, that you lose your gun. What we've been doing is getting people to plead to simple battery, and then putting everything that we can put on there, like Level 1 and Level 2 counseling, like mandatory community service or 180 days suspended jail sentence. We've been putting as much on it as we can using a simple battery. But here's what we lose by doing that forever. One, you're not going to be on any registry. The registry allows us to know who's a previously convicted domestic violence offender for purposes of enhancement for a second offense and a third offense. If you're on that registry, you commit a second offense within seven years, your jail time is mandatory 10 days. And a third time, it's a felony. We're not going to get that with a simple battery. We're not going to get a registry, and we're not going to get the gun prohibition, we're not going to get any of that. So, that's what we're doing today, because that's the tourniquet. And I use that term instead of a Band-Aid. I mean, this is seriously a tourniquet, not a Band-Aid. This is a big issue. But that's our only alternative now. So, what I'm bringing to you at this moment is alternative three, and then I'll talk about the future. Alternative three is not perfect, but alternative three is our attempt to adopt as city law, the same law is on the books of the state of Nevada, the NRS, but without the gun prohibition. Because if we have that gun prohibition in, we're back to jury trials. What's the point of even adopting this? With that gun prohibition in, even at a city level, we're back to jury trials. The only way to get around the jury trial requirement right now is to go back to where we were prior to 2015. And here's the bad thing about this bill. One, people have asked me, because it's inconsistent with state law, is there a preemption argument that the state laws already legislated in this area, and therefore the city can't? There is an argument. And we will only know the answer to that if somebody challenges us and we go to court. We have arguments that it's not, and we have some limited home rule. We have a lot of issues that we're going to raise. But this is an attempt to now get you back on a registry, and have a second offense become 10 days, and have a third offense become a felony, have all those mandatory things come back without the gun law. It's not perfect either. And somebody asked, okay, you're going to lose the state prohibition against possessing a gun, but you still have the federal prohibition. Well, you don't have that either under this solution. And the reason is, the federal law is written to say, you cannot possess or own a firearm if you've been convicted of battery domestic violence, and here's the kicker, under state, federal, or tribal law. This ordinance is none of those three. This is municipal law. And when the government means to say municipal in addition to those other three, they do say it. They didn't say it here. And there's a bill before Congress now to add it to that federal gun prohibition, but it hasn't passed yet. And it may never pass. So, go in knowing that this solution that we're bringing you today gets us back a lot more than what we have with simple battery. It doesn't get us back all the way we were with the original battery domestic violence, because we won't have a prohibition of firearms. And so, let's go to long-term solutions. I have been asked by the governor's office to talk about special session, and it's abundantly clear to me that right now, if there were a special session of the legislature, which I personally don't favor, but if there were a special session to address this, the question would be, what is it we expect them to do? Do we expect them to repeal that law that makes it a state crime, basically, to possess or own a gun, and that gets us back to where we were prior to the Anderson decision? I would advocate that. I would advocate that, and many other prosecutors would advocate that, because we'd still have the federal prohibition, and we'd get out of the jury trial problem. But I can tell you right now, advocates won't, and people who supported the law before won't. And until we all go up with the same voice, I don't want to ever sit at a table with domestic violence advocates on this side, saying, keep that gun prohibition, we need it to protect our lives of our victims, and the lives of police officers, and everything else, and we're over here saying, but if you do that, we're going to have this enormous expense. And another compromise might be, advocates say, then fund it. Fund specialty courts. Fund judges. Fund this to make this all happen. And then we say, sure, if you want to fund it. But I can tell you right now, if I turn to Gary Amlee and I say, this is how much more I need in next year's budget to do this, and we're building a courthouse over here right now, it's already been designed, what do we tell them? We're going to need five more, 10 more courtrooms? This is a real issue that needs to be addressed in real time. So, I don't think a special session is, in my opinion, appropriate right now unless all people who are all on the same side. We are on the same side as Safe Nest. We are on the same side as every one of the providers out there, service people. I'm not saying this for no reason. When I was appointed in 1992, I got a phone call from Patricia Lynch, who was then City Attorney of Reno. And she was a strong advocate, the strongest advocate in the state, against battery domestic violence. And she knew how terrible our state laws were. And she was invited to a conference in 1993, and it was the first-of-its-kind conference. It was sponsored by the National Council of Juvenile and Family Court Judges in March of 1993, and you had to be invited by the Chief Justice of the Nevada Supreme Court to go. And a delegation of five people from each state went. She was the one prosecutor from the state of Nevada. She gave up her seat so I could go. And I did. And it literally, if you can talk about five days that changed your life, that did it for me. All I had to do was meet people that had been through this, listen to what other states were doing. There are protocols out of Duluth, Minnesota, and out of Albuquerque, New Mexico, and these wonderful things they were doing. We came back and immediately started the Southern Nevada Domestic Violence Task Force, and I was president of it for two years. Frankie Soudal Papa, our then Attorney General, started a state task force on battery domestic violence, and I sat on that for almost 10 years. And during that time, those first couple of years, we rewrote the domestic violence laws for the state of Nevada to toughen them up like they had already done in Duluth and Albuquerque and other cities around the country. This is an issue that I have made a priority in our criminal division. Suzette is one of our very first advocates that we hired. Nobody had advocates before that. We had four or five at one point in time, including one that spoke Spanish, so we could reach out to everybody. There's a terrible problem with minority communities reporting battery domestic violence. If somebody is undocumented, they're not likely to pick up the phone for fear that they'll be deported. If somebody doesn't speak the language. In a gay relationship, people are afraid they'll be discriminated against. There's all, and that's, regular people go through this. The dynamic here is awful. But I want to let you know that every word I say to you, I don't say because I like saying it. I don't like the idea of the options I'm bringing to you, because I can't bring you a perfect one. But I can tell you that we are committed to doing the best we can with this. I respect whatever decision you make today, if you decide to adopt this law or not. I am highly recommending it, because I think it is at least something more than we have right now. And if in the next few months, we get information from the DA's office, and we can work with the advocacy groups, and we can find another solution, we'll come back to you and give you that report and get new direction. Having said that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, a question, have you met with the attorneys representing the other municipalities in the Clark County Commission? So, do we have a common understanding and view of how to proceed, because it's indoluble, domestic violence to all of us is absolutely repugnant, too blown away as nothing. And I don't even think you get to three. To me, if there's somebody that has committed an act of domestic violence one time, and maybe because of some short in their brains of what happened, all right, so that one, you penalize with counseling or whatever, a second time, to me, is it, because there's not going to be a third time. I've seen too many people, there have been too many teachers I've known that have been abused, both sides, men and women. And it's just, I think, to have us all together in Southern Nevada, so it goes from you to the other and your team, to the other legal branches in Southern Nevada. Do we have a common voice?
I believe we do. Ed Poleski in the audience, Ed's spoken with him. I have been on the conference calls with him. We've worked with Henderson, North Las Vegas, Reno, and I know Clark County District Attorney's Office. So, Ed, if you want to fill in some gaps there on where those conversations have been.
Good morning. Ed Poleski, Assistant City Attorney. The Anderson decision came out on a Thursday. We had a meeting that following Monday with the DA's office, Henderson, North Las Vegas, the AG's office in Reno. And I know that Henderson, I believe they passed their ordinance that Brad has outlined last night. North Las Vegas is considering theirs tonight. So, the municipalities in Southern Nevada are all working together with this particular remedy, if you will. The DA's office is going to go forward with their jury trials under state law. So, we are working with the other municipalities.
And did Henderson last night, you say, pass this?
Correct.
Voted in favor?
Their version of it, I don't believe it mirrors ours exactly, but it's the same in theory.
Same conclusion.
Right.
And by the way, we're not recommending this, it's like, we're stopping here. We're asking you to pass this, and then you're never going to see us again. After we leave this, we will continue to monitor what goes on at the DA's office with jury trials to find out if delay is as bad as we think it might be. Some people will tell you that, you know, these, a lot, most of them are going to plead. I can tell you right now, everybody's asking for a jury trial, because they know they're going to clog up the system. And that's just a reality. And so, before you begin to hear numbers, please listen to Ed, because he's got the real numbers that we're dealing with right now.
And so, your municipal court as well, ill-prepared to hold jury trials? Same?
Yeah, I agree completely. And just for a little bit of background, I was a prosecutor in Michigan, and we had jury trials for misdemeanors. Our county was about 150,000 people. We had four judges to handle that caseload. It was nowhere near what we have as far as the population of Las Vegas, our tourists, the other folks that live in the county that come through Las Vegas. And we had four judges to hear misdemeanor jury trials. We have six judges. Our caseload was nowhere near what we have in our office. As Brad indicated, we have almost 5,000 DV cases roughly a year submitted to our office. We wound up approving about 3,000 of them, because we deny them perhaps for evidentiary reasons and whatnot. So, no, our offices, not that our deputies wouldn't like that experience perhaps, because it's from an attorney perspective, it's a good experience, but from the perspective of moving these cases through, we would have a huge backlog. It would be dangerous for our victims. It would be impossible at this point, with our staffing and our infrastructure, to do these.
How many victims are we going to lose in the length of time it's going to take us to fix this? How many people are going to be killed?
It's a good question. Here's what happens. We, the number I got when I was doing domestic violence training in the early 90s was 75% of victims recant their testimony prior to trial. That doesn't mean it didn't really happen. The pressure's on them.
Right, of course.
You know, I'll tell you a real quick story. Because of our advocates. One of our advocates came to me and said, "We just have a victim in here, and she claims that the guy didn't do what she said he did." And I said, "What did she say he did?" She said, "He punched her in the face." Something had happened where she received a cut in the process two on her arm. And I said, "Well, what's she saying now?" And she's saying, "Oh, she's got a great story. The story is, they have a bird in a cage hanging over the kitchen table, and she went up to change the bird seed, and the bird bit her." And I said, "Well, the bird may have bitten, but it didn't break her leg. Oh, that happened when she fell off the chair onto the floor." "Well, how'd she get the black eye?" "Well, then she fell into a doorknob, and she got the black eye." And this is a story she made up, because this is what happens between charging and trial. And we couldn't prove the case, because she would not testify. And she showed up a few months later, looking like she went about two or three rounds with Mike Tyson. I didn't recognize her when she got off the elevator, because it happened again. And that's why promptness is absolutely critical. Right now, 90%, 90% are either not showing up or recanting. And the longer we make that timeline, it'll go to 100%.
Right. Well, I mean, obviously, timing is critical, but we have a lot of questions here, so let me start first on with Councilman Anthony. And then we'll hear from Councilwoman Seaman, and Councilman Knutson, and anybody else, please.
So, I think you did a good job explaining this. I have a complete understanding. You know, we don't know what the future holds for this. Anything can happen with court decisions and legislatures getting together, but we have a problem today. And the way you've laid it out is, today, we just can't do jury trials. In fact, we don't do jury trials for any misdemeanors in the state of Nevada.
Correct.
They have to become a felony, enhancement to a felony. So, we're just not set up to do jury trials today. Maybe in the future, we will be, but we're not today. And what we can't do is, we can't treat battery domestic violence cases as a simple battery. We can't do that. We, as you mentioned, we've been working years and years to treat domestic violence batteries different than simple batteries, and have put more elements in there that you've explained about, and make it harsher, and have the law try to help the victim and get the abuser back out of abusing. So, we can't treat them as simple batteries, and that's what we're doing today. So, I think you've come up with a valid and excellent option today with this ordinance to go back to, if this passes today, tomorrow, go back to treating battery domestic violence as a battery domestic violence. And the firearm incident is in there, but that's not our fault. I mean, that's, the Supreme Court made that decision, and we're not going to argue the whether that's, they did a good job, or not. We're not talking about that today. They made their decision. So, I think this is a great argument. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Seaman.
Okay, so, I just want to get clarification for myself and for the public. So without the city's ability to perform these jury trials, it forces us to charge simple battery in domestic violence cases. The charge of simple battery does not carry mandatory counseling or mandatory jail time, but more importantly, it fails to escalate a third count of domestic violence to a felony. That's what I'm understanding.
You understand correctly. That's exactly right.
So this ordinance will fix that.
That, those things back. That's correct.
Puts them back. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Knutson, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Jirbyk. That was a great presentation. We've talked about this, and I had the CEO of Safe Nest, Liz Ortenberger, in my office. And I think I maybe took my colleagues back at the recommending committee, because I asked for 30 days. I do think I understand, at the city's perspective, I think you did a great job of evaluating it. I think the challenge that I had was understanding the comprehensiveness of what this decision is today. I'm supportive of this decision, of your recommendation, but what I still struggle with is the implications of longer-term strategies. And the way I look at it now is, government is complex, just the city is complex, but this issue is affected by local government, county government, state government, judicial branch of government, and that makes it even more complex. And so, my request of you, with permission from the mayor, is I would like to stay engaged with your office as you reach out to the county and the state. One, because I want to feel comfortable with the decisions that I make, and I want to be aware and knowledgeable about what I'm doing, and the impacts it has on the community. For this particular decision, I'm comfortable now, I wasn't a couple of days ago. I feel more comfortable with this recommendation. My request also is to be as someone who can learn. I need to learn a little bit more about this issue moving forward. So, I would like to be in a city that is progressive in thinking about long-term impacts. We're the largest city in the state. We're one of the largest cities in the country, and I think we should be leading the charge on what's right for our community, and what's in the best interests of victims and our entire community, including the legal community. And so, with more permission from the mayor and Mr. Jirbyk, if you're comfortable, I would like to spend a lot more time learning about this issue, and working with our colleagues at the county, state, our, obviously, the state legislators, because this will have long-lasting impacts on our community.
I genuinely welcome that. Thank you.
And if I might add to that, we're going to hear from Councilwoman Diaz, and we'll hear from Mayor Protem in a minute, that I think this is of such significance to all of us, that you can be assured, none of us want to be left out. This is about a human being, one at a time, that is in a predicament, that any future, any delay, looks so bleak and awful. And I think we want to be included and kept, not to interfere, not to take more time, because you're having to brief us all, all the time, but to be advocates, to help you, and help your team of colleagues that you're going to be working with. But I think we all need to, and are passionate about seeing this get its teeth, and take care of those who are abused. We can't wait. We just can't delay two more years for that person that last week, last month, six months ago, is still with us today, but continuously under this horrible, horrible nightmare. So, with that, Councilwoman Diaz, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first and foremost, I want to recognize the efforts of us as a southern region coming together to talk about something that is so critical, making sure we're keeping our residents safe, because we know that domestic violence is real. And we know that going through the motions of reporting it, and having that person who is victimizing the victim really come to justice is so difficult, based on what you've just shared, Mr. Jirbyk. And so, I wanted the public to know, and not to lose sight, that we are here for the residents, that we are hearing your clamors, that we are trying to do the best to our ability to resolve this issue with the Supreme Court ruling. Unfortunately, there's lots of layers, as Councilwoman Knutson has just explained, that get in the way of us offering the best remedy for keeping everyone safe. But I think that them getting away currently with just a very minor slap on the hand and a simple battery charge is also not the correct way to continue to address these cases. And so, if moving the ball down the field and doing something more expedient is going to help, I'm all for that. And I want to echo that, you know, the mayor has mentioned in previous meetings about us having a legislature that only meets every two years, really hinders our ability to act expediently, because we are waiting on the legislature to remedy a lot of these rulings, and we don't have the ability to say, "Oh, we're going to go meet in February of next year." We're an annual state that meets every year. We know we meet every two years. And so, just for people to start really thinking about the consequences of having a legislature that meets every two years, and how it really does tie our hands, and then we're facing, maybe, you know, if the governor chooses to call a special session to address this issue, or many other issues, that's his decision. And so, with that, I'm all about making sure we're moving expediently to meet the needs of everybody, and so I will be supportive of this measure, because I think it's way better than what we currently have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman. What I'd like to do now, both Councilman Greer and Mayor Protem would like to make comments, but I think we'd like to hear from Will Horn and anyone else. I mean, I think this is an appropriate time, but I will limit you to two minutes, but would like you to come forward again, restate your name if you don't mind, and keep your comments, if you can, to two minutes, and we will put a timer on that, please. And Mr. Jirbyk, I'm sorry, I could get you a chair, but I know you, probably, a lot of the questions will warrant comments back from you.
I'll be sitting over there.
So, we'll go forward. Thank you.
Morning again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is William Horn, Vice President, Strategies 360. I'm here on behalf of my client, Safe Nest, who is present, and Ms. Ortenberger will come forward and speak on some statistics that were mentioned earlier, particularly about our objections on this. We understand the council is in a tough spot. But we believe that this ordinance, and I appreciate the time that Councilman Knutson has given us, and also, we met with Mr. Jirbyk yesterday for about an hour on this. There are some things that we do disagree with, and I won't get into those legalities about, you know, the Supreme Court's decision, you know, trumps your charter. We get that. One of the things that we find objective, objectionable, is guns are so violent. In a domestic violence instance, it makes it more violent. It makes it more lethal to the victims if they remain inside the home. In way of background, and many of you know, I served 12 years in the legislature. I've been recognized for my work in domestic violence legislation. But I was also, during that time, in the interim, a criminal defense attorney. So I've seen both sides of that. And to remove that provision, we think is a step backwards. We also are looking for leadership from our municipalities to speak out openly, like here today, and say, "Nevada Legislature, Mr. Governor, we would love you to come in the special session and provide a fix for this that has occurred, that is tying our hands." We haven't heard that. I believe that a special session, while that remedy will not be the complete remedy that we need, I think it'll be more of a remedy, and safer for victims and police officers, than what capable of at this level. Lastly, I haven't seen anything, a petition to the Supreme Court to say, "Can we have some time?" Because the Supreme Court has basically said, "You have to do something that you were physically unable to do at this point." That's like the court saying, "Mr. Horn, before you can appear before a court, you need to be in a size 44 long suit." Okay, I can do that if you give me some time, but today, I can't fit in a 44 long suit. So, it would be helpful if the municipalities could say to the court, "Okay, give us the time to do it, but your order today is physically impossible, because you don't have the jury boxes. You don't have the access to the jury polls." But we haven't seen that type of effort either, and we'd like that. We'd come to the table and we'll work with how that looks in a special session as well, but removing the guns will make it only more dangerous. And I grew up here, and there's never been a year there hasn't been a fatality in domestic violence. And I shudder to think that after this, that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. You're over three minutes now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Ortenberger, CEO for Safe Nest. Thank you to Councilman Knutson and to City Attorney Jirbyk for meeting with us over the last week. We also met with the DA's office and many other folks to talk about this issue. During committee on Monday, Protem Furi demonstrated some frustration over the stats that we were giving being too national, so I want to give you local stats. In 2017, which is the most completed homicide report we have on domestic violence, there were 19 incidents statewide of homicide with 28 victims. 17 of those incidences of homicide were inside the city of Las Vegas. 10 of them included gunshots. The youngest victim was 1, the oldest victim was 74. Clark County as a whole, including the municipalities, carries 88% of the domestic violence misdemeanors for the state. So when our Reno colleagues tell us, "We're going to wait and see," they're talking about 40 cases. When we say, "We're going to wait and see," we're talking about 13,000 cases countywide. When it comes to the city of Las Vegas in particular, you carry alone 30% of all domestic violence misdemeanor cases for the state. But we're not even talking about guns in the home after a charge in the other side of it. Safe Nest is unique, because we deal with victims, batters, and children affected by this epidemic. In our batter's treatment classes, we hear about guns under pillows, guns being put in the mouths of victims to get them to comply, and guns being used as a constant sign of threat and imminent homicide. And these are in houses where no homicide has yet occurred, but the chance of homicide is there in conflicted misdemeanor households. That is what will be happening in the future under this ordinance. We recognize that the city is in a tough spot. There is no easy solution here. We like the idea of requesting a delay, of course, and continuing to at least follow the mandate of guns being removed. The most important thing to know here is that there are systems around the country that work very well. And as we're getting ready to design a new court building, there are DV specialty courts that deal with the entirety of the case. We haven't talked about the most dangerous point for a victim of domestic violence is at child custody swapping. When we extend these cases, family court waits for municipal court to make a decision, and child custody continues to be swapped. This ordinance puts victims of domestic violence and police officers at inordinate risk of homicide and death. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that we do have Metro Officer here. Mr. Officer Callaway, yes? And if you could just make your comments, and we'll hear from a few others if they would.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I wasn't planning on coming forward and speaking today. This is a very tough issue. I believe we're between a rock and a hard place here. From Metro's standpoint, let me say this. Our commitment is on reducing violent crime and ensuring the safety of victims of domestic violence in our community. And as such, in the field, we're not going to change anything we currently do based on this Supreme Court decision. We will continue to make arrests for domestic violence. We will continue to hold those that commit these crimes accountable. We do understand that on your side, you don't have the resources or the infrastructure to deal with these cases in a jury trial. And one concern we have is folks slipping through the cracks, folks that either plead to a lesser crime, or are charged with a lesser crime other than domestic violence, so they don't get those services, they don't get plugged into those anger management and programs that help reduce domestic violence. We obviously have a great concern about folks being able to retain their firearms when they've been convicted of a domestic violence. We do think that the legislature does need to convene and hold a special session on this. I agree with the comments made by Mr. Horn, that I think effort needs to be made in addition to this ordinance, to try to push for more time, to push in case the legislature doesn't meet, or there isn't an easy answer to this, that down the road, jury trials could be had. I see this as a temporary move to prevent these cases from being addressed as simple battery. So, we support the intent of the ordinance, but obviously, we have concerns about the firearm component, and we want to work with everyone. We will continue to work with all stakeholders. So we thank you.
Thank you for coming down. You know, I worry as much about this as a firearm. I've seen too many, too many, just from this, or a chair, or a brick. And so, a firearm is a piece of it, but this piece is the bigger piece. And the time that all of this is going to take, and for us to get the legislature to act on an annual basis, to me, and thank you, Councilwoman Diaz, because to me, we are dinosaurs in Nevada. We are dinosaurs that are extending everything, and it's time to do something, which this is just one huge, significant piece. But I worry about this as much as I worry about every firearm in the hands of the wrong person, who will manage to get it regardless. They will get a firearm, and they have these. So I'm going to turn now, oh, anyone else that wishes to come up and make, and thank you, thank you, officer. And if you will, keep it to two minutes, and then we're going to go ahead and turn it to Councilman Greer, and then Mayor Protem. So please, sir, yes.
Daniel Brayston, citizen of Las Vegas. This definitely is very important. In the Air Force, what we used to do in maintenance, when we had a write-up, that there was oil on the hangar floor, we would come in and just wipe it up, and then clear, and the forms wiped up the oil. And that was okay until General David C. Jones took over Air Force Europe. He came in and said, "Okay, the effect is the oil on the hangar floor." But what was the cause? Was there a bad seal, improper training, improper manuals? We, it was massive that we changed a lot of the manuals that the employees didn't use because they were incorrect. What appears to me that we're doing here with domestic violence is that we're focusing on the oil on the hangar floor, which is very important. You don't want to leave it there. You do need to deal with domestic, but as people pointed out, it's not just a gun. It'll be a knife, a bottle, a frying pan, all that stuff. So, yes, we can stop guns, but they'll use cars and trucks and whatever. I would like to have more focus placed on the cause. And I think, yes, alcohol and drugs are there, but a big part of it is not knowing how to manage anger. We don't really know how to handle anger, and in today's society, with social media and all this other stuff, we need to come some way to start teaching people about the four different personalities. There's four different personalities. There's four different personalities. There is the emotional bank account that Covey talks about. These are things that a lot of homes have never even heard about, and I would like to see, and this could be taught a lot of ways, but it could also be put in commercials. People, anger happens when you don't meet my expectation. If you meet my expectation, there's no anger. So we need to start talking to people that if you're angry, you may want to change your expectation.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, come right on up.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mayor, for letting us be heard. My name is Claire Hooper, for the record. I am here as a member of Moms Demand Action for Guns Since America, part of Every Town for Gun Safety. I am here to ask you to vote no on 2019-35, which would add to Las Vegas Municipal Court Title 10, a new chapter, to establish a city misdemeanor offense of battery, which domestic violence along with corresponding penalties. I am aware of the arguments in favor of making this change by city code in order to... Sorry. In order to avoid jury trials, which the city cannot conduct. But this fix or workaround will further harm survivors of domestic violence. We cannot ignore the harm that will be caused by allowing people convicted of domestic violence to keep their weapons. I urge you to reject this bill and instead take a step back, work with county and state officials to find a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, anyone else? I'm going to turn this now over. Oh, yes, please.
Hi, my name is Sasha. I'm here as a member of Moms Demand...
Sasha, I'm sorry, we needed a last name.
Oh, sorry. Sasha Barrise.
Could you spell that? Last name, please.
B-A-R-R-E-S-E.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman, Mayor Goodman. I'm here as a member of Moms Demand Action for Guns Since America, part of Every Town for Gun Safety. I'm here to ask you to vote no on Bill 2935, 2019-35. Domestic violence and guns are a deadly combination. An abuser's access to a gun makes it five times more likely that the woman will be killed in a domestic violence incident. In Nevada, a firearm was used in 57% of all intimate partner homicides between 2013 and 2017. Nevada's strong firearm safety law enables Nevada law enforcement to hold domestic abusers accountable if they acquire firearms after they're convicted, and they also ensure that abusers turn in their guns upon conviction. Forty-six other states have figured out how to provide the right to a jury trial to those convicted of similar crimes of domestic violence, and I think that Nevada can figure it out too, and we must in order to protect victims of, and domestic violence survivors.
Thank you very much for coming down. Okay, I'm going to close public comment now and start with Councilman Creer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, let me start by saying, I don't believe that there is one person in this building that doesn't want what is best for any victim of domestic violence, battery, whatever you want to call it. And I really believe that the city has an intention to try to do what's right and to do what is best. I do have some concerns. I don't know if we've exhausted all of our options prior to us getting to this point. I concur with Mr. Horn that I believe that we should make an effort to try to, whether it's, you know, advocate to the Supreme Court, ask for a stay, so that we can have some time to figure this out. I would not want to proceed with something that does not have some type of gun prohibition within it. You know, I would hate to think that something would happen after a person is released from our custody and goes back and goes back to the gun that they have, and bad things happen. And I don't believe that there's one person in here, especially on this DA's, that would want that to happen as well. I would like to see if we could take a step back and see if we can make an opportunity to go to Supreme Court and see if we can grab some time and figure out a better strategy towards this. I don't know if we're under some time constraints or not, but I would like to see all options exhausted before we go into something that potentially could have ramifications to victims of battery domestic violence. Brad, maybe you can answer that question.
I can. It's a good point. Here's what happened in this case. We have, the Supreme Court is not going to entertain a motion to stay. They've even cut off our ability to ask for one. Here's what happened in this case. This is how serious it is. This normally goes to a three-judge panel, not the entire seven-member Nevada Supreme Court. It went to a three-judge panel, and without any petition, it went right to the whole seven-member body of the Supreme Court. And then the next day, they issued the writ on this, cutting off any ability to ask for a stay. They have sent a very clear message here that they are not going to entertain it. And even if they didn't, here's what I think would happen. But that's a fact. We can't ask for a stay. We would love to ask for a stay. It's a great idea, but we legally can't. But even if we did, we'd be looking at the Nevada Supreme Court, and we would say, please suspend a constitutional violation for two or three weeks while we get our ducks in a row. We would still have to charge simple battery. They're not going to let us charge battery domestic violence, when they've already said it's a constitutional violation to not have a jury trial, go with it. And so I appreciate the thought, and I think it's a great one, and we would love to pursue that, but we can't.
But, so, we're charging battery now?
Just simple battery.
Simple battery now. And I think if we don't make an effort to at least, whether we petition the governor, petition the legislature, or even try to attempt to go back, I know you said that you said we can't, but, you know, you always can petition any public body for anything. Now, what they respond to it is subject to them. But it seems as though those things need to happen before we go into something like this, and to try to work it out on both sides. You know, there was a comment that was made that there is consensus on the entities that deal with domestic violence on the ground, and obviously, that is not the case. We have some dissension, and I'm sure they would love to have an opportunity to be a part of the conversation, that can come up with something that would be more harmonious. And to figure out this gun prohibition, I think that's obviously a huge sticking point. I've heard to say that we can't do it because of our charter, but there's at least attempting ways to go about trying to get that overdone as well. I would like to see that, and I wouldn't be supportive of something today without having at least attempted to make those concessions into any type of ordinance that we pass. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now, we're going to go to Mayor Pro Tem, then back to Councilman Knutson, and then we'll make a motion. So please, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So time is of essence in this particular situation, because right now, as of when the Supreme Court made this ruling, that put our municipalities basically taking domestic violence and putting them to simple battery. So if you're truly about getting guns out of the hands of domestic violence, this is the ordinance that's going to do that, because on the third step, their guns get taken away. If we don't pass this, then it's a simple battery, and they can come back 10, 20 times, and it's not taken away. So I really think that it's quite misunderstood. I was in the legislature when SB 175 was passed in 2015. That bill allowed for the ban on firearms for individuals who were convicted of certain misdemeanor domestic violence offenses. I also sat on the Assembly Judiciary Committee that heard all the testimony for and against that bill. I voted for that bill in the Judiciary Committee and on the floor of the Assembly. I supported the ideas of the bill, and I still support those ideas. Unfortunately, today, we are forced to do something. If this bill does not pass, there will be no domestic violent convictions in the city of Las Vegas. Let that sink in for a minute. You guys are here about taking the guns away from felons. This is how you do it. The city of Las Vegas prosecutes, as Mr. Jerbik has said, about 5,000 domestic violence violations a year. If we do not pass this bill, we will have to prosecute those cases as simple battery cases. The bill requires counseling if you are convicted of domestic violence. A battery charge does not. The bill has steps for increasing penalties for those convicted of domestic violence. Simple battery does not. This bill allows for felony charges for the third charge of domestic violence. Simple battery does not. For those of you that oppose this bill, I have a simple question. What's your solution? Because waiting around for the Supreme Court to let us talk could be a year, two years, and in that time, we're looking at $5,000, $10,000 criminals getting simple battery charges. If we don't pass this bill, we will have to prosecute domestic violations as battery cases. There is no other solution. Last night, the city of Henderson passed a similar bill, and today, our city and North Las Vegas are considering the same legislation. This should not be a controversial bill. It is a compromise bill that will protect the vulnerable domestic violent victims. Finally, this bill does not take our ability to prosecute domestic battery cases based on state law. It only gives us another avenue until the law is fixed. And we, I was in the legislature for a couple of terms, we cannot call a special session to fix statutes, so that is not allowed. In the meantime, we need to protect the victims of domestic violence, and this is the only solution on the table.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilman Knutson.
Thank you very much, and I apologize. I know it's not protocol to speak twice, but I speak so rarely that I really want to use my time.
No, 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 you have the floor.
So in 30 seconds, here's what I'd like to say. Mr. Jerbik, given my request, and I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize for that. I usually don't like to do that, but is it possible for you to kind of outline what your next steps will be? And again, my thought is, is I hate being a city of tourniquets and Band-Aids. I think that's not the place that I want to be in. So what I'd like to do is work with you on what that strategy would look like, but for the folks in the audience who have different thoughts about this bill, can you lay out what the next steps will look like and how we will work together, including some of the folks in the room?
I will. I met with Ms. Ortenberger and Mr. Horn day before yesterday. I just talked with Ms. Ortenberger a moment ago, and I said, we need to have a meeting next week. We don't have a council meeting. We need to get on this right away. My goal is to, again, just put the tourniquet on this with this ordinance right now, knowing we haven't sewed the patient up and sent him home to heal yet. We know we have more work to do. But what I want to do is get us ready, if there is a special session, I want everybody singing from the same page of music. It would be terrible if we didn't all agree, we're going to have jury trials, or we're going to go after funding, or we're going to take away the state prohibition on guns, or if we're talking against each other, imagine how difficult it is as elected officials when you hear that yourselves. And so I think what I need to do is reach out to every advocate and reach out to every person in the legal community we've already talked to. So we have a counterpart in Henderson, North Las Vegas DA's office, and reach out with Metro as well, and sit down and see if we can't work toward that compromise that we can all agree on. That would be my goal. And if we can, if we can, then I think that's time to pick up the phone, call the governor's office and say, if you call a special session, you're not going to hear conflicting testimony. You're going to hear one solution from the community that's most at risk. That's my goal.
Well, and I think that's well stated, and make sure that we get the unincorporated Clark County, every municipality, speaking the same song or singing the same song. It is, it just infuriates me is how mixed up, messed up we are legally, and that we work against each other all the time. So at this point, Mr. Dorchuk, you had a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to do everything by the book, the city attorney's office is a very minor textual amendment. We wanted to reiterate that we brought up at recommending committee. Line 11 of page one should read Title 10 of the municipal code of the city as opposed to Title 10, Chapter 32, Section 10 of the municipal code. So if we get a motion to approve this ordinance, we would need it to be a motion to approve with the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. Okay, so at this point, I would turn to Mayor Pro Tem, please, for a motion with that amendment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we are forced to prosecute domestic violent cases as simple battery with no resolution for our victims, this is a solution to fix this until our state goes back into session. And with that and this amendment, I move to approve Agenda Item Number 50.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Mr. Jerbik, as always, thank you for the clarity, your history, your knowledge, your efforts, your passion. I mean, it comes clear, and we really are grateful to you. It's very difficult to handle and understand situations. None of us are lawyers, to my knowledge, and thus, to understand the history and what the laws on the books are and the difficult choice we've just had to make. Councilman Creer, are you orally voting in favor? Are you?
I am voting. My system won't come up. It sounds like I might be the only no vote, so maybe the system even doesn't want me to vote no, but I am going to vote no.
Okay. And if you'll please post. So as we see the motion carries, thank you very much. And for all of you, just know our hearts and souls are there with you. This is a very difficult time. We're hoping to get a resolution, and certainly, time is so critical in this for all our victims.
I appreciate it. I promise all of you, it doesn't stop here. We're just beginning to get our arms around this. Thank you.
And please do apropos of Councilman Knutson's original request to make sure that we're all kept duly up to speed on every part of this. It is so critical.
I've just notified, I just notified my assistant in the Criminal Division, we're setting up a meeting next week with Safe Nest and other advocates. I'll invite you to all the meetings, Councilman. If you can make them, great. If you want to just get a report after the meeting, that's fine too, but we'll keep you in the loop. And the rest of you as well, who would like to be kept in the loop.
Are they allowed to come? That violates the open meeting law, so the only thing I'd like is the information to come down to us all equally, so we're all on the same page, please.
You got it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move now on to, what time is it? Okay, we are moving on to Agenda Item 51, Bill Number 201937. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bell rang?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-37, an ordinance creating the city of Las Vegas, Nevada Tourism Improvement District Area 15 and providing other matters properly relating thereto. Move for approval.
Thank you. This motion to approve Agenda Item 51, please vote and please post. Motion carries, and we'll move on now to Agenda Item 52. Recommending Committee, bills eligible for adoption later meeting. Items number 52 through 55, bills number 219-31, 34, 36, 38 will be heard later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. New bills, number 56. Item numbers 56 through 60, bills number 2019-39 through 2019-34 will be heard at Recommending Committee meeting Monday, November 4, 2019. City Attorney, would you please read the new bills?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-39, an ordinance granting to Crown Castle Fiber LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of New York and authorized to do business in Nevada, a non-exclusive franchise for a telecommunications service within the corporate limits of the city of Las Vegas, subject to and in accordance with a certain franchise agreement entered into between the city of Las Vegas and Crown Castle Fiber LLC and providing further related matters. Bill Number 2019-40, an ordinance to generally prohibit within the pedestrian mall and surrounding areas the use or possession of certain types of weapons and implements, as well as toy and replica firearms, and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2019-41, an ordinance creating the city of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 814, Summerlin Villages 21 and 24A, ordering a street project, storm sewer project, sanitary sewer project, drainage project, and water project within the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, and providing other matters related thereto. Bill Number 2019-42, an ordinance concerning the city of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District 814, Summerlin Villages 21 and 24A, and assessing the cost of local improvements against the assessable property benefited by the local improvements, and providing other matters related thereto. Bill Number 2019-43, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the city of its Special Improvement District Number 814, Summerlin Villages 21 and 24A Local Improvement Bonds Series 2019, approving the form of certain documents with respect to such bonds, ratifying action taken by city officers towards the issuance of such bonds, and providing other matters related thereto.
Thank you very much. New bills, number 2019-39 through 2019-43, assigned to the November 4, 2019. Recommending Committee members, Councilman Anthony Knutson and Councilwoman Fiori, if any so designated, are unable to attend the clerk's office. Will coordinate fighting substitutes as necessary at my discretion. Thank you very much.